I think that's forty-two and a half seconds already.
Okay, all right. Well, welcome everyone this evening. And we have a lot of folks attending that are dressed in blue with badges on, so we welcome you. Would you like to join us in the Pledge Allegiance to the Flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, invisible with liberty and justice for all.
Mary, roll call.
Olson.
Here.
Collins.
Here.
Johnson.
Here.
Callen.
Here.
Kupczynski.
Here.
Coburn.
Here.
Okay. And first on the agenda is a really special presentation that we have, and this is for the great work that our police department does, and Chief Latanzio, and your two captains, Carter and Heinrich.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Tonight is my privilege to honor two employees for Employee of the Year. The first one is to Tim Sheridan, and this is for Civilian Employee of the Year. Tim, you come up here for me? Tim Sheridan has been an Albany Police Department records clerk for ten years. Tim provides excellent service to the public and to our members. Tim's current assignment is the Laserfish and Fleet. Tim's Laserfish duties take up the majority of his time, ensuring our reports are properly stored and then forwarded to the appropriate agencies. Tim's attention to detail ensures we maintain accurate records. Tim's second primary duty is to manage our fleet. Tim has been responsible for our fleet for many years and takes a great deal of pride in keeping our vehicles roadworthy. Tim keeps track of vehicle needs, repairs, and mileage. He schedules maintenance, assists with vehicle replacements, and ensures damaged vehicles get fixed as soon as possible. Tim has recently assisted with vehicle fuel cards and maintaining that system. A secondary duty for Tim is to help the public at the front counter. Tim is always willing to help out the front when staffing need occurs or when additional assistance is required. Tim maintains a positive and helpful attitude even when dealing with the same difficult people year after year. Tim's dedication, hard work, and positive attitude are noticed and appreciated. Tim is always willing to step in when needed to cover shortages throughout the records department. Tim is a team player and a great asset. For these reasons, Tim is our Civilian Employee of the Year. Congratulations. There was a plaque. And it's signed by everybody and the mayor. Good job. Congratulations. Our next is the sworn Employee of the Year. Will Sergeant Robert Hayes please come up? Sergeant Hayes is a hard-working and dedicated employee. He leads by example, consistently setting a standard for others to follow. Sergeant Hayes works extra shifts covering minimum staffing, takes on extra duties to include department training and instructing classes at Department of Public Safety Standards and Training. Sergeant Hayes is recognized across the state of Oregon and the Pacific Northwest as an outstanding trainer and leader regarding impaired drivers, alcohol and drug use, and trash investigations. An example of this recent work provided valued information to the Oregon State Legislature on new marijuana laws. The city of Albany is fortunate to have such a knowledgeable and respected resource. Sergeant Hayes is very knowledgeable in department policies and procedures and consistently helps his team work through questions they might have during investigations. He provides appropriate and constructive critiques of employee work product, which fosters positive acceptance and change in their performance. Sergeant Hayes works at building great team unity. He ensures larger and more complex investigations are completed through teamwork. In addition, Sergeant Hayes makes sure calls for service are fairly evenly dispersed so that no one officer is overwhelmed on a daily basis. Sergeant Hayes comes to work each day with the goal in mind and motivates employees to work hard in specific areas as dictated by the daily mission. For these reasons, Sergeant Hayes is the Albany Police Department's Employee of the Year. Congratulations. [applause] Good job. Thanks, Mayor.
All right. Well, thank you. And on behalf of the City Council, we're very proud of our officers and staff, and Sergeant Hayes, and also Tim Sheridan, just outstanding work. And it's great hearing all that recognition that was spoken. So, we're proud of you guys. You've done a great job, and thank you for the quality service you provide our community. So, thank you. Okay. Next, we have scheduled business, and this is communication. So, this is from a report from the Albany Visitors Association. Jimmy.
It's a hard act to follow.
I know. We've got an outstanding department, so we're so fortunate in Albany.
Well, we were saying that we don't know about the rest of Albany, but we sure felt safe in here.
That's true.
So, my name is Jimmy Luke. It's spelled J-I-M-M-I-E-L-U-C-H-T. I'm with the Albany Visitors Association, which is at 110 Third Avenue. I just wanted to report to you about the travel trade shows that we have attended so far this year. We've been to three travel trade shows. The first one was the American Bus Association, which was in Louisville, Kentucky. We had fifty-two appointments at that event. An appointment is kind of like speed dating. You get seven, depends on the show that you're at, you get seven to ten minutes to visit with somebody, to find the table that they're sitting at, and then tell them why they need to come to your community. So, it's a speed dating exercise. Like I said, we had fifty-two appointments typically at destination marketing organization like Albany gets thirty appointments, but we had several of these tour operators that were requesting us. As a matter of fact, thirty-three of the appointments we had were requested by the buyer, which is a pretty good sign that they're interested in Oregon product and hopefully interested in Albany as well. We also went to the National Tour Association, which was in Atlanta. We had twenty-six appointments there. Oregon had a huge contingency there. There was over thirty people from Oregon there representing the state. So, it made it pretty nice to, when you sat down with the tour operator and they said they were interested in gardens, you could tell them about the Talking Water Gardens and then also say after you've visited this, you can go to the Oregon Garden. Or if they're interested in, as many of them were, movie scenes or sets, Brownsville and then Cottage Grove and Astoria were other sites for movies and that sort of thing. And then the last show that we went to was the Select Travel Show, and that one was in Little Rock, Arkansas, and its travel program directors, which is bank travel or Parks and Rec, and senior center travel, that sort of thing. We had twenty-six appointments there, so in total, we had over a hundred appointments. And so now, in the next few months is when the real work begins of going back and contacting these people, and if they were interested in a particular theme, then finding that information for them and getting it to them. We'll be contacting each one of those tour operators two to five times in the next few months. So, over the last year, we have seen about eight to ten day trips from these appointments. Unfortunately, we don't know when all of these tour groups come in. They don't always contact us. A good example of that was when I was at NTA. I happened to have dinner one evening with a couple who ran a tour company out of the San Francisco area, and they were telling me how much they like our Carousel, and they're planning on bringing their group back up here in the first part of June as they're going to the Rose Parade. So, we don't always know that they're coming, but we do know that there was about eight to ten that we worked with at the office. The Carousel says that they had eighty-six busloads of people in one year, over the last year. That accounted for about five thousand people. So, one of the things that we're going to be doing is setting up a database and working with the Carousel, the museums, the Montieth House, so that we can track, get more information about these folks, and track who is coming and what they're coming to see and do, and we can better service them while they're here, so that we can make sure that they have a good lunch before they leave town, that sort of thing. We do know that there was one tour operator that came last year that they spent the night here, and the mayor helped with that group. It was a little disorganized. The person who was leading the tour was kind of on her own, although we had things planned for her to do. She was kind of freewheeling it as she went. But it was two buses, over ninety people, and they spent one night here in Albany, then went to Washington, and when they came back, spent another night. So, that would have been over a hundred room nights from that one group. Plus, they had two meals while they were here in town, so that would be a hundred and eighty meals approximately. So, that's the kind of stuff we want to bring here. They just need to get earlier into their planning schedule to do that. As you all know, the Travel Oregon Commission was here in February on the twenty-second and twenty-third. They held a training at the main library. It was Tourism 101. And then we had some of the commissioners and some of the Travel Oregon staff that went on a tour, guided tour of the historic districts. We had a reception at the Carousel, dinner at Ciberus, and then the next day, the commission meeting at the Expo, and then a regional destination marketing organization meeting at the Albany Regional Museum. And that meeting was catered by BOMAX. And since then, I've been to another regional destination marketing organization meeting, and we have set the bar high. They're all trying to meet what Albany has provided them for when they were here. So, I appreciate Matt and BOMAX for doing that. Some events that are coming up. Spotlight on the Northwest is coming to Albany in September. They have had Spotlight on the Southwest, Spotlight on the East Coast, whatever. This is the first time they've been to the Northwest, and they're going to be here in Albany. There'll be about fifty tour operators that will be in the area for three days and nights and doing training and having meals at different restaurants, that sort of thing. So, we're looking forward to hosting those folks. The Travel and Words Conference, we've made a bid for that in 2017. That'll be thirty to fifty travel writers, and they would be spending two to three nights here. Food Works Conference. There was just a Food Works Conference in Portland. I believe it's going to be an annual event, the one that happens next year and for the years after that. I understand Albany is going to be their post-conference event, so they'll be coming down to Albany and spending two to three days looking at the wine industry, at the microbrews, and that sort of thing. Too bad the guys in blue left, because the solar eclipse is coming in August of 2017, and I understand that's supposed to be huge. It's going to be a total blackout in August 21st of 2017. In December, I was at a meeting with some of the Travel Oregon staff, and they said, you know, we have this group, these folks in Europe that we're working with, they're looking for places to stay. There aren't many hotels left. Well, Albany is right on the path. So, I called my staff. They did a quick call around. I got them the information, and Petra from Travel Oregon sent it to her contacts in Europe, so hopefully they'll be showing up and staying here in Albany for that great event, the solar eclipse. In 2018, July of 2018, we're looking at bringing the Northwest Tandem Bike Rally here. That would be about eight hundred bicyclists with four hundred tandem bikes. It sounds pretty logical, doesn't it? It's two per bike. And they will be staying four to five nights. This year, that event is in Klamath Falls, then it goes up to Seattle, and then, so July of 2018, we're hoping it's going to be here in Albany. That's what we're proposing. And we're also proposing, excuse me, every year, the Travel Oregon has a Governor's Conference on Tourism. And I have been asking them to consider Albany for that, and I got a call the other day, and they said, yeah, we considered Albany. We're keeping you in the mix, but you didn't get it for next year. And this was just before the commission was here. And I got to thinking after I took that call, I don't want them here next year. I want them here the year after, in 2018, when the Carousel building is finished and we can host the welcome reception in the new Carousel building. And so, I've proposed that to them. We've taken Carol, who is the Travel Oregon person who is responsible for putting on this conference. We've taken her on a tour of some of the hotels here in the area, tour of the fairgrounds when she was here. She's going to come back, and I'm going to take her to the Carousel and some of the other venues that are downtown for a dine-around event that they might do. And we're going to be working towards 2018, but we can't say that yet because they want to announce it at the 2017 Governor's Conference. So, are there any questions?
Any questions?
Thank you so much for the time.
The only thing I can say is, when you mentioned about the solar eclipse, I was sitting there thinking, I think it was like in 2010, somebody had met with me thinking it was going to be a huge tourism event for us to start planning for that for 2017, and I was thinking, oh, this is a long ways away. I can't believe that's going to be next year.
It's coming fast.
Yeah.
And in my mind, it would have started on the East Coast and come this way. It starts in Newport. That's where it hits the continent first, is in Newport, and comes this way. And Albany is right on the path. And at the last, I guess it was at the RDMO meeting that I was at in Portland the other day, they were talking about, there's a special name for the path, and I can't think of what it is. It's kind of like the Path of Doom or something. It just has this terrible sound to it, and it's what they call that black streak that follows it across the continent. And it's huge. Eastern Oregon, I understand there is no lodging available over there for that event. So, we just need to fill up the opening.
Hopefully, we have clear skies.
Exactly.
Could you imagine? Yeah. Hopefully, no forest fires either, where it's smoky like we had for our air festival last summer.
Well, again, thank you so much for your time.
Good question, yeah, Rich.
If at some point you know how many people, one thing that they're all going to need to view it is a lens, and the number of Shade 14 lenses is very small anymore because of automatic lenses. So, the sooner people know about how many people are going to be there, the easier it would be to make sure that they could all get a lens, because that's one of those things that if you ask for it the week before, there's no possibility.
I've seen ads for the little cardboard that are supposed to be for, kind of like those 3D glasses, but they're for viewing a solar eclipse. I don't know. We'll have to look into that and see if we can.
Might need to start marketing those.
Exactly. Well, thank you.
Check with optometrists or ophthalmologists or whomsoever. Some of those kinds of things that they sell are not good enough to make sure you, especially with kids' eyes.
Right. Yeah.
You can always use an electronic lens, but, you know, a couple of hundred bucks is a little steep for most folks.
Well, when it lasts for two minutes.
Yeah.
Well, they can then give it to their kid to learn to well.
Okay, all right. Thank you, Jimmy.
And this is just some tidbits about tourism in the area.
Great, thank you. Thank you, Rebecca, also. Yeah, thanks. Okay. Is there anyone from business from the public? Not seeing anyone. Okay, Council, you have a second reading of the ordinance, and this is Keeping of Animals to Allow Residents to Temporarily Keep Juvenile Swine, and I believe it's going to be the second reading will be on page five, the No Emergency Clause ordinance.
An ordinance, I'm sorry. An ordinance amending AMC Chapter 6.10, Keeping of Animals to Allow Albany Residents to Temporarily Keep Juvenile Swine and Declaring an Emergency.
Move adoption of the ordinance. Sorry.
Okay. Any discussion?
Just for clarification, the title that was reviewed, you mayor said no emergency clause. The title that was read included an emergency clause.
Oh, and you wanted the emergency clause one?
Right.
Oh, okay. Yeah. All right. Yeah, Rich?
I received no adverse communication from anybody wanting to know what the heck was going on or anything, so I have no problem at all with the emergency clause being in there. Everyone's had a chance to make their will known if they so desired.
Sounds good. Okay. All right. No more discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay. Motion carried. All right. Well, have fun with the little pigs. Yeah.
I'd be okay for my kids to come in after July after the fair and talk about their little pigs.
Oh, you bet. You bet.
Just so they don't bring the pigs.
Yeah.
Picture with a smiling face would be nice, too.
They could bring the little pigs when they're real little.
A video with grunting involved.
Yeah. Well, thank you. Thank you. Good luck. Okay. Next is adoption of the resolution. This one is on page seven. This is adopting a new fines and fees schedule for Albany Public Library. Don't see Ed Gallagher here.
Ed asked if I could explain something, but this actually is, he's not even sure this really needed to come to council. It's not a fee increase. It's merely raising the bar on, it allows the, in the past, the library has allowed folks to check out books even though they may have as much as $5 outstanding in fines. This raises that bar to $15, and he says he thought he probably had the authority to do it administratively, but it was sent to the council for your consideration. It's just additional service to our public. It really doesn't have any, it's not an increase in fees, and it really doesn't have any adverse effects that I'm aware of, other than that maybe. I guess you could argue that could cut into fine collections, but I don't think it'll be significant.
Move adoption of the ordinance, sorry, the resolution on page seven.
Second.
Okay. Motion's been made in a second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay. Motion carried. And now is adoption of the consent calendar, and this is just two items, and they are over some money purchase plan and trust, so I'll entertain a motion for adoption of the consent calendar unless you'd like to have an item pulled off.
So moved.
Second.
Okay. All right. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay. Motion carried. And next is award of bid. This is city property mowing contract, and I see Ed Hodney just made it in just in time for his item. Unless there's no questions, I'll entertain a motion for approval.
Go ahead.
Yeah.
Just a quick question. Like it indicates in the staff report, that the bidding was very, very close when you combine the two of them together, and it mentioned that this is kind of a subjective process going forward as far as to what some of the actual numbers will come out. Do they vary that much over a period of the contract that makes it, you know, necessary to take a harder look at the actual bidding of the other person?
Well, I guess my short answer is no. The two lowest bids were very close to each other on the base, but then the, and that's the foundation for the award of the bid. Whichever is the lowest is the one that gets the bid. And then there were other ads that could be selected, and we selected one to go with the low bid on. So, I don't think, I think this is very straightforward, and I don't think that we had any protests or any other concerns being expressed by the bidders. All right.
Bill?
Let's double-check the math. When I add R&amp;R's bid and their alternate for the edging, it looks to me like they're the low bid.
That, I think you're right, Bill, but the bid was advertised as to be awarded on the basis of the base bid only and not inclusive of any of the additives. Technically, there were other ads that could have been selected as well, which would have, could be manipulated to, you know, pick among more than one bidder, but we award on the base package only.
Okay. And that's fair.
We do have a history working with Charax already.
A very long history, and actually, I don't think in our memo, we indicated it, but the price actually went down over this five-year period rather than going up. So, that's good.
That's good. Yeah. Okay. What would you like to do with this item? Counsel?
I would move that we award the bid to Charax.
Second.
Okay. Any more discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay. Motion carried. All right. Back page. Appointments.
That is in fact a good question.
So, we have one appointment. This is on page 38, and this would be for Larry Preston to the Building Board of Appeals. And Larry, and actually, this is one of those committees that never meet, so I think it was, but we have to end up having it as a placeholder.
Well, in fairness, it does meet very rarely, but it does, we have had occasions where they've happened.
I think I had looked, and it was the last one, it'd been like five years, the last one, they had a meeting scheduled, and then it ended up getting canceled. Usually, this committee is won over, I think the last time was sort of over one of the shone houses, you know, and then it ended up being canceled, so. All right. So, what would you like to do with this appointment?
Move and approve.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay. And the next is appointing Karen Cardoza to the Community Development Commission as a housing representative. Karen, I think all of you know her. She attends our work sessions once in a while, council meetings. I think a week ago Monday, she was there, and so she gets the, for the appointment for housing representative.
Move appointment.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay. Motion carried. All right. Next is a report, and this one's of notice of emergency measure to be authorized by city manager for temporary fire station.
Right. And I think Chief Bradner had explained this situation to you earlier, where we've known, well, it is certainly not an emergency in the sense that we knew at some point we would have to find an alternate location for the fire station while the old fire station is being demolished and the new one's being constructed. The one that came available just came available. It had not been on, you know, the chief had been looking, hadn't been able to find anything, and then this one suddenly became available. And now, within the next month or so, he's got to have a place for his crews to respond from. This one works. We've checked, we've done a survey. We, one of the captains, I believe, or B.C.s actually went out and talked to all the neighbors. There's no complaints or problems. And so, for that reason, the chief wanted, and he checked with community development and planning to make sure that this was an appropriate use of that clause in our land development code, so that they wouldn't have to go through the ordinary site plan review process for this temporary use. And so, he's asked that I be authorized to declare that emergency and so that we'll have a place to, where our fire and ambulance, I don't know if he's actually going to put an ambulance there, but our fire crews can respond from there.
Okay. All right. And you don't need any action. This was just a report.
Correct.
Any questions?
Well, I think the only thing that he was looking for is if any councilor had concerns about that process.
Concerns? All, okay. All right. Next is East I-5 Development. Jeff?
Yes, that'll be me and Ron. So, this is, this was kind of a last-minute ad.
authorized by city manager for temporary fire station.
Right, and I think Chief Bradner had explained this situation to you earlier where we've known, well, it is certainly not an emergency in the sense that we knew at some point we would have to find an alternate location for the, the fire station while the old fire station is being demolished and the new one's being constructed. The one that came available just came available, it had not been on, you know, the chief had been looking, hadn't been able to find anything, and then this one suddenly became available, and now, within the next month or so, he's got to have a place for his crews to respond from. This one works. We've checked, we've done a survey, we, one of the captains, I believe, or BCs actually went out and talked to all the neighbors, there's no complaints or problems, and so for that reason, the chief wanted, and he checked with, with community development and planning to make sure that this was an appropriate use of that clause in our land development code so that they wouldn't have to go through the ordinary site plan review process for this temporary use. And so, he's asked that I be authorized to declare that emergency, and so that we'll have a place to, where our fire and ambulance, I don't, I don't know if he's actually going to put an ambulance there, but our fire crews can respond from there.
Okay, all right, and you don't need any action, this was just a report. Any questions?
Well, I, I think the only thing that he was looking for is if any councilor had concerns about that process.
Concerns, all okay. All right, next is East I-5 Development. Jeff?
Yes, that'll be me and Ron. So this is, this was kind of a last-minute ad, we have it maybe a little bit scattered in our, in our presentation here, we didn't have a lot of prep here on this. This, what's driving this is, you may recall that we had a Somerset subdivision proposed by Miles Bradner east of I-5 that went to our planning commission not too long ago and was denied by the planning commission, and I'm actually gonna, just want to acknowledge that if, since this is kind of in, in the middle of a land use process or a potential appeal of a, of a land use decision, I'm gonna ask Sean to cut me off if I go too far in what I'm describing, because I don't want to get in trouble. But, so I'll try to stick just to facts. We went, went forward with a staff report that recommended approval for Miles's subdivision. Following the, the testimony that was received, the planning commission recommended denial. Miles has appealed that decision to the city council, and at the same time, wanted to take a step back and talk with staff about what alternatives there might be to satisfy the concerns of the neighboring citizens. So while he feels confident in, in his application to appeal, his desire is to, is to see if he can work, work out a solution that works for everybody. So in doing that, we sat down and looked at his development, I'm gonna hand out a couple of different things. So two of the primary concerns that were raised by citizens during the public testimony had to do with lack of a secondary connection to the south from his development. There's really one, there was one road in proposed from Clover Ridge Road which met code requirements based on staff's review. So that was one concern that was expressed, and the other was impacts at Knox View, which we had an improvement required of either a roundabout of, a mini roundabout, if you will, or a traffic signal. There was concern expressed about those two items. So, Miles wanted to see, talk about if we had any creative ideas. I'm gonna pause there, I said I'm gonna be a little scattered. There's a couple other things going on out in this area. We, obviously, the city owns property to the south of here related to the, the old Brandis properties, and we have a series of improvements identified in each of our master plans, our sewer, water, and transportation master plans for improvements that would be constructed across part of that parcel, and there's obvious, obviously an interest in trying to market those parcels as well. So the city has some neighboring interests, some new information that we've had, as you're aware, we've been going through the process of trying to get a wet, sorry, I should have kept it for myself, a wetland delineation done on this, on this parcel out here, I guess multiple parcels. And we have the preliminary results from our consultant, and we have now submitted to DSL, so we don't have concurrence yet on our delineation, this is still draft information. But the thing that'll jump out at you on the map when you get it is that pretty much everything along that northern portion of the parcels there is wetlands. So that's a significant challenge for someone to come in there and develop. Obstacles to developing that, having someone be interested in developing that area are the cost of wetlands mitigation, the costs of additional construction costs as it relates to requirements that come out of working through wetlands, and then, as it sits now, they have all these infrastructure requirements that are required in our master plan as well, so the costs, costs start mounting. So, Miles is, was aware of the city's desire to try to get, get improvements through there and some of the obstacles we were up against, so where, where we ended up was with a, a potential plan of, and Ron's gonna talk about specifics, but when you look at your map, we wanted to explore the possibility of a road connection down to the south, southwest.
Could you stop for a minute, kind of point out on here where we're talking about?
Yeah.
I, I'm lost.
So if you go to this one?
Yeah.
And you look at the bottom half of the map, and you follow the dash line south from Miles's subdivision?
Yeah.
And west, across over to?
That's second, that's item number A on this, this, this small piece, right?
Yeah, it is, yes. Apologize. Are you zeroed in now?
Well, sort of.
Yeah.
All right, so where we ended up was wanting to explore the potential of, if there is a way to navigate this where if that connection was made from Miles's subdivision down to the intersection of Somerset and Timber Ridge, so right in the bottom center of this 11-by-17, if this, if this connection was made, does that pull off enough traffic to get them, so that they can avoid the improvements at Clover Ridge Road? It would obviously meet the neighboring property owners' desires for directing traffic away from Clover Ridge and having a secondary access. It would alleviate Miles's requirement to sprinkle all of those houses, and so there's, there's costs that start coming off of Miles's plate that he would be willing to potentially put towards these other improvements. The hit, the, one of the last hitches is that, as you're aware, we recently changed our transportation, our TSP and the SDCs associated with it, so if he was to construct this portion of the road, it's no longer SDC eligible, which means he doesn't get SDC credits anymore. And so part of what we're here to do tonight, I'm, I'm kind of just going with it, aren't I, Ron? Sorry. Part of what we're doing here tonight is to see if council is open to exploring the possibility of seeing if we can bring, bring this, bring this to a, to a different path forward that meets some of the city's needs with future infrastructure being built through this, makes the neighboring property owners happier, and allows Miles's subdivision to go through. Again, the hitch is to try to, is the, is the, the TSP and the SDC process that we have to go through yet again. Again, I said I was scattered, I apologize, I'd like to be more, more organized so I don't ramble, but we, the, the challenge here is that Miles has his appeal in, and that's got a schedule that, that he has to operate on. He is interested in withdrawing that appeal, and if the council just gives a general head nod tonight that you're open to considering what Ron will talk a little bit more about the TSP and SDC modifications, then he would pull that, let that play out a little bit, see if we can come to an agreement that works, and then reapply. We would waive his application fees so he's not having to pay the application fee twice, but give it, give it a chance to play out and see if we can come up with something that, that's a win-win for everybody. If council is not inclined to go through that TSP and SDC process again, then he, he wants to continue with his appeal path because that's, that's really his only point forward at that point. So what we're looking for was a, was just a general head nod as far as let's explore the, the concept. Ron, you want to explain the, you want to bail me out and explain the TSP and SDC stuff a little bit?
Okay, Jeff mentioned, there has an appeal been filed already, it's scheduled to be in front of the council on April 13th. So unless Miles decides to pull it, you'll hear that action on the 13th. So we did do a TSP amendment in this area last year, and I'll, I'll direct your attention to the 11-by-17 map with the color-coded road alignments on it. The TSP in place today includes the orange and blue segments, so a connection from Miles' subdivision, kind of the southeast corner, over to Santa Maria. That's what's in, what's in the TSP today. It does not include the green section. The green section, however, is, is as Jeff pointed out, the alignment that one of our sewer trunk mains will follow, and that we'll end up having to have a gravel road over almost no matter what, so there will be, and Miles would, if Miles's property subdivides at some point, that sewer main has to go in on the green alignment to serve most of his property. And so, the development of the property north of the cities is dependent on a sewer line and that green alignment. That sewer line would have to have an access road over it, the access road could be gravel, but it would be cutting through the white line and would require some white line mitigation. And so that kind of, you know, in light of all of the things that have happened recently raised the question of what would it take, would there be any interest in converting that gravel road over to sewer back into a street? If we're willing to look at that possibility, it sounds like Miles might be willing to withdraw his appeal. But us looking at that possibility is a pretty long process, you know, it's a TSP amendment, goes, there's some staff work that starts it, goes to the planning commission, the planning commission recommendation would ultimately go to the city council, so it's a fairly long process, and if we follow that path, and Miles withdraws his subdivision application, he probably wouldn't refile until sometime next year. Preliminary indications are he's willing to consider that. So, you know, the question before you tonight is, are you willing to consider the thought of, of looking at a TSP amendment in the not-too-distant future that would add back in the green, green alignment as a street? So the green and orange would definitely be a street alignment. The blue connection probably still needs to be some form of connection over to Santa Maria to get the, at a minimum, the kids from that neighborhood over to the school. So it could remain as a street, could be a bike-ped connection, could be any of those things, nothing you have to decide tonight if you want to proceed, but it is something that we'd consider if we do, look at TSP amendments in this area again.
One last thing to add, one of the reasons I think I support exploring this is because, again, with the, with the water, sewer, and transportation infrastructure all being in a master planned facilities through here, the city's identified that we, that there is, this need exists for these facilities in the, in the, in the, in the big-picture sense. Which, with the infrastructure requirement that's there, and the wetlands that are there, if this property is not desirable to a developer, as is because of those obstacles, that means that the city's gonna have to fund construction of those at some point in the future anyways in order to get what we have identified as critical, critical facilities. From my perspective, it makes a lot of sense to try to take advantage of a partnership opportunity that we have here to try to come up with a common solution in which we don't have to put cash forward. What, the way that it works is, is, as the, as the developer, Miles would invest in that infrastructure, and he would get credit on this development so that he ends up not having to pay fees with the houses, he gets reimbursed for that. So it's, on, on the, on the backside of that, then the city as a whole has the added benefit when you go to try to market the rest of this parcel, that the infrastructure is already in place. So that's not a cost that when you're trying to market it to, to a developer, that the developer has to account for and take off of price that they're, that they're willing to consider. Obviously, the public works is part of the, part of the city, but, and, and we're foregoing revenues from the other ones and from the houses in order to, to get that infrastructure, but it's off, the, it's not public works property.
Yes, sir.
Best-case guesstimate scenario, I guess, if he pulls the appeal and we go through this TSP process change, how long before are you going to be able to turn a spade of earth to build a home? Talking a year, year and a half, six months?
Next season. In previous discussions with Miles, he's not planning whether, whether his subdivision that he applied for that's under appeal now, whether that was, if it was approved, he wasn't planning on going to construction this year, so he was looking at next season. So that's probably a workable timeframe even if the TSP amendment were to happen.
I think that we ought to allow staff to investigate, and if we go back to the original concept, we were looking for some connection from Timber Ridge to the north to get out to Clover Ridge. This, this allows a connection, and I, and I recognize that under our development code and the fire code, subject to the outcome of the appeal, all those proposed lots up there could be built with sprinkler systems, but would still have the negative impact of all of those dumping out onto Clover Ridge. If, if we were to amend the, the transportation plan to allow the green and the little orange dash and the blue line, I, from a transportation network perspective, I think it makes a lot more sense. People can come north and south, they can come out that way, come out Timber Ridge, they can get back over to Clover Ridge, we make the connection over Santa Maria, it provides the secondary access back out of there, get the kids over to school, it's safer, so, you know, if there's an opportunity to come to a rational solution where we obtain long-term objectives in the city, I think it's worth giving staff the opportunity to have that discussion, much like we did with staff up on Crocker when we were looking at some major issues, and we let them have some, some time to negotiate, and they came back with a solution that everybody was happy with.
I agree.
Thank you.
Agreement? Okay.
I think the more streets, the better, and if the contractor doesn't complain about it, let's go for it.
All right. Thank you, Ron and Jeff. All right, next is code enforcement report. So Marilyn, you've been busy.
As usual, I don't have anything in particular that I need to say, it's all there in, in the report. We seem to be, well, as, as I've said in the report, we are focusing more and more on extremely poor properties, properties that have been maintained poorly, that have been inhabited when they shouldn't have been, and continue to be inhabited when they shouldn't be, and we, it takes a very, very, very long time to solve some of these problems. One of the properties on the list was in the condition that it, well, it's, it was in better condition then, but still it was a, if I can add a pig analogy, a sty. When I was a reporter in the early 1990s, reporting on ghastly conditions that the fire department found there during a medical call, it, it takes a very long time to solve some of these problems, and we're hoping to come up with some solutions in the next year that might speed that up and make some of these places a little more safe for the people who have to live there. We do have some, some progress to report, where I'm thrilled to report that Jefferson Court is gone, and is now a nice vacant lot, the neighbors are happy about that. See, some of the other ones that may, there may be some changed conditions since I wrote the report. We're going to be seeing some, I think, final cleanup on Alco Street, is it that, the end of this week, or next week? No, this week, I think it's tomorrow and Friday, I believe. Okay. We also have a couple of potential owners in a, not exactly a bidding war, but they're keenly interested in the property at 704 Fourth Avenue, that's down at Fourth and Thurston, down this direction, it was damaged by fire several years ago, became the victim of attempted remodeling by people who didn't know what they were doing and didn't bother to ask for help. Then it became a haven for people who lived in the backyard and created a mess for the neighbors. It has been taken over by Fannie Mae and has, is being sold, and we hope the person who gets it is the person who wants to restore it to the character of the neighborhood. I believe those are the only ones that I had updates on. 402 Gary Street is also being, having some extensive work done to it, but not enough. And 405 Denver Street, we reported on that at the work session a couple weeks ago. Sean, my, I don't know, do you have anything to do on pursuing getting that one?
I actually contacted the attorney this afternoon for that and talked to his assistant, and they were going over tomorrow. Apparently, the owner is now somewhere in Corvallis. Apparently the owner is now somewhere in Corvallis and they're going over tomorrow to get the deed signed over to the city, is what I was told, so.
So, so council, we actually have, sort of have kind of a rising problem with some, some of the dwellings in, in our community and a lot of them are rentals. So probably since last fall, I've had quite a few meetings, there's been some with neighbors. Sandy from Police Department, Police Department Representation has, has joined me in trying to deal with some of the neighborhood issues also. We've been meeting with staff and, you know, and Mary Gay, you know, with code enforcement, trying to come up with a solution and Sean's been kind of brought in, what, what can be done. We, it's sort of to the point, don't want to really explore much more without council, kind of, you know, giving kind of a go-ahead, let's have staff kind of explore what we can do. We have a lot of new transitional type housing that has risen and a lot of them are exceeding the amount of limits that you can have in a dwelling and mostly when it comes to bedroom and making, and we have no way of inspecting to be able to get into these dwellings to know. It came to me just even a couple of weeks ago, kind of a new house that we didn't really know about, that the landlord is renting out a recliner for 300 a month and a couch for 300 a month and packing people into the basement. There's people being, living in attics. We have a lot of, you know, fire and life safety issues that is taking place. And then we also have a neighborhood issue. So this first came, came to me, and that was last fall, from a neighbor, you know, that is just concerned about the amount of transitional housing that has increased into their neighborhood. You know, most houses in a neighborhood don't have 20 people that live in a house and come, come and go till 2:00 in the morning. So I think what we need is really for staff to look at, we, we need to be looking at the state code and federal code and what can we, in other cities, what can we really do? Are some of these houses considered boarding houses? Are they not? What can we really do? So I think it's sort of time to have staff sort of explore more and come back to you on what direction you want. Yeah, Wes?
We've had an intern working for about the last month on that very question of what are other cities doing. He's been going, you know, working with the league and going through different codes and his next phase is he's going to be interviewing code enforcement people in other cities to see how they're dealing with similar issues. Additionally, there's going to be some, a budget proposal to add some staff in the police department with some different funding sources to try and help deal with some of these problems because the mayor's absolutely right, it's, it's getting bad and the problem, of course, is it's, you know, easy to say, well, people should be able to use their property as they wish, but when it starts to spill over into their neighbor's property and create problems and, and so forth, we hear about it and we're expected to, you know, enforce codes and things, so.
Right. And, and it's also, you know, life and safety issue too, when you have folks, you know, quite a few of them living in a basement and you don't have windows, you know, you've got to be able to have some sort of, you know, better access and safety for these folks. But there's no way of, you know, really inspecting them too. So I, I think the council would like to just kind of have staff kind of do some exploring and bring back to the council an update.
Are these houses in single-family neighborhoods?
They're single-family neighborhoods, yeah.
Is it legal for a landlord to charge multiple rents on a single-family house in a single-family neighborhood?
They can charge what they want.
Yeah, it's, I mean, it's legal to charge. The question, I think the concern we have now is the, the amount of people that are in the house and what's legal and not legal, depending on what we clarify, you know, classified into be, if they're a boarding house or if they're an Oxford house, if they're, I mean, what, what they're called and how they fit under federal and state guidelines. That's what we're going to.
Well, are these all Oxford houses?
No. My understanding is.
We're not having the issues with the Oxford houses.
It's others.
Well, if I'm a landlord and I buy a house and I move two or three families in there and I charge rent from all three of them, aren't I breaking some kind of a rule someplace? I can't believe that our rules are so lax.
It becomes.
Come one and all, live in my house.
Well, believe it or not, out in my neighborhood, Dick, we've had, in fact, I'm not, I shouldn't make any allegations in my, against my neighbor without knowing for sure, but I do know that there was at least one house, once removed from mine, where multiple families were renting the house.
Well, renting one house and paying rent, one, one rent?
No, no, no. Multiple families, I mean, they may have, the multiple families may have been paying rent. So let's say three families get together and they want to live in a nice, nicer home, which was the case out in our neighborhood, and so the rent for that home was, you pick it, you know, 1,500 a month. Each one pays 500 bucks and you have three families living in the home. And that, those kinds of living arrangements are not uncommon and it's really tough for us to try and figure out, you know, you knock on the door, well, yeah, this is just one family.
Well, I, I think back to the good old days when I was a graduate student at Oregon State and a bunch of us paid $75 a month to live in the upstairs of a house. When there were three of us, it got pretty reasonable, $25 a month. When there got to be five of us, then it got to be real reasonable, $15 a month.
How could you, Dick? I mean, come on.
Well, I did get through, I did get a degree, but, but it was the, the one rent. It wasn't the guy charging.
You had to.
Each one was 75 and pretty soon I was.
Well, it becomes very difficult sometimes.
It's his fault. You started this.
No, I didn't.
I think the mayor's request is.
I can't believe.
Probably reasonable.
Our rules are so lax and we allow this kind of.
I think the request the mayor has on the table is reasonable. I have some, some concerns that we not get into a full housing code, not get into a full rent control stabilization type of community, but I think there are some public health and safety issues that need to be able to be addressed, so.
Well, we're also trying to cure blight in our suburban renewal area and this certainly pushes against.
But if you get into, my understanding, Dick, if you get into some of those full-blown housing codes and rent control, you, you have to set up another staffing bureaucracy that I don't think this community's interested in doing, but I think we are interested in protecting the public health and safety and the rights of adjacent property, private properties.
And, and that's the main intent here is just to really kind of see what we can, if there's something that can be, you know, something in ordinance or we need to be able to somehow enforce the codes that are out there. So how can we?
Let's let the staff come back and talk to us.
Okay. Is council okay with that? Have staff do some exploring.
I was just going to say, you know, because there's so many things that make people have to do this, you know, the unemployment, the low wages, the, I mean, there's so many things and so this is kind of, half of this and half of that, yeah, we might not like it, but sometimes that's the only thing they can afford. They can't afford, you know, renting an apartment by themselves or whatever and stuff and so I think we have to be kind of careful.
I've got full sympathy for the people that have to do this. I have no sympathy for the slumlord that is making, making the box I'm doing this.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah. Okay, all right. Staff have enough direction on that? Okay. Anything else on code enforcement? Any other questions?
Good job, Marilyn.
Thank you, Marilyn.
Yeah, I particularly like to comment on this one place remained a destination for former guests.
Oh, yeah. Exactly.
Business from the council. So Bessie, anything?
Nothing.
Okay, Bill? Nope, Dick? All right, Rich? Okay, Ray? White? Okay. Well, and, well, thank you guys for filling in on, you had a long meeting on Monday for a one, one topic, subject there, so. But I was up in Portland with Ed Hodney and Matt and Janelle Bennett. We went up to the Oregon Festival and Events and Albany took four awards up there. So we had gotten award for kind of a new event of renovating, you know, the, from our Mondays at Monty, that's now Summer Sounds and how it was increased in the amount of attendance. Matt and Janelle Bennett got the sponsor of the year award for sponsoring events and before promoting a lot of, doing events for fundraisers. And Chris Whitfield got it as volunteer of the year for the, doing the balloons out at our Art and Air Festival. And also Albany, Albany won the event of the year and that was for the Chris Daughtry concert for, out at Art and Air Festival. So out of the state of Oregon, we received four awards, which was great, so. So, yeah, and it's all our Parks and Rec Department just did a fantastic job in putting on these events.
Press release for that?
Was that?
Press release for that?
Yep, I think we need to get that. I would imagine Parks probably, I think they're.
Anybody receive more awards than we?
Nope, we got the most, so, yeah. So, yeah, so it was great. Okay, that's it that I have. Wes, anything? Nothing? Staff have anything? Mayor?
Sean gave a presentation at that, at that association as well, the conference.
He did.
On recreational marijuana.
Oh. And something else?
Recreational marijuana, e-cigarettes, and, and drones at, at events. So there were quite the combination there. And Marilyn was very helpful in helping me put a PowerPoint presentation together, so.
Yeah.
Thank you for that.
Yeah, yeah. No, it's great, so. Okay, if that's it, then our, we have a work session March 21st and a regular session March 23rd, but I do believe we have Kara also next week then, right, yeah. Okay, with that, we're adjourned.